I don't think so.
I haven't seen any mayor signs.
Yeah.
I have like belly buttons.
He'll still be there.
Did you hear something scary?
You're not ready. I'd call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Croft.
Here. Let's start the meeting out with P three, review and discussion regarding the allocation of funding at the amount of one million four hundred twenty thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars from AZ Cares Act Fund. Mr. Duffy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Castle. I just have a three-slide presentation.
Oh, good boy.
This evening, learning, learning, yeah, getting good. And one of the slides is the title slide, so that makes it even better. And nothing's working.
That's nice, Joe. Hey, Joe.
I like the font.
And that's one of the three?
They're just really long.
Yeah, this Arizona Cares Act.
The golf cart that I can read.
Okay, as, as Mayor and Council know, we did receive one million four hundred and twenty-seven, twenty thousand dollars for the Arizona Cares Act Fund. I just wanted to carefully explain how, how we're accounting for this money and how we're able to actually spend the one million four, one million four hundred thousand dollars basically at Council's discretion. So part of it is we had us set up a separate Arizona Cares Act Fund, fund. And so when the money came in, we put it in that fund, and we did receive the full amount. And then each pay period, we basically expensed the police department's payroll for that two weeks, all their, all their wages and employee benefits over to the fund. So what that does is that results in savings in the general fund. So we budgeted for the police department the 1.4 million over these two fiscal years, and we're not going to spend that money. So this is actually savings in the general fund that you can allocate to whatever projects you see fit for the community. So does that make sense?
As far as how they calculated it was on public safety.
Was on, based on public safety expenditures, because they just deemed everything public safety from March first forward to be COVID-related. So, so in the Arizona Cares Act Fund, you'll see the one million four coming in, and then you'll see each pay period, which is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per pay period hit. And between now and October, we'll expense all the money that's in that fund. But we didn't spend the money in the general fund, so that's what's available for Mayor and Council to decide how to use it. So any questions on that? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Questions?
Do you have questions, or do you have, it makes sense?
Makes sense to me. I like it.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Frank, and he's come, he has an idea from the Roads Committee, and, and we'll be available to ask question, answer questions.
So, we had brought up in discussion amongst staff and the Road Committee on what to be done with available funding, and came up with some suggestions. And what we've got is, the Road Committee looked at it and brought some numbers to the Road Committee, and their recommendation is, is the column that underneath Road Committee. And staff actually went back a little bit, thought about it a little bit, trying to see how the dollars work, and actually have a little twist on it that Council might want to consider as well. I'll start with just the Road Committee recommendation straight up that was basically to resurface Road Two North all the way from the highway to Bright Star. That would be some sort of rebuild and/or overlay of the pavement, depending on how much is there. And then seal coat the neighborhoods of Appaloosa Meadows, one and two, Bright Star, so there's no T in there, Molly Ray, and Parkside Village. And that would equal 2.4 million. We got to looking a little bit at the Road Two North from Pepper Tree to Bright Star, and that's already a chip seal road, and it's about 20 feet wide. So to really look at widening that road might bring in a bunch of extra cost, moving the ditches and everything. So another option to consider is to just chip seal instead of overlay from Pepper Tree to Bright Star. You'd still get a new surface on there. It'd just be significantly cheaper. And that would open up the ability to do a seal coat in Highlands Ranch and Mesa View Estates in exchange for some of that money. So that's another option there to maybe stretch those dollars a little bit. And those seal coats in those low-traffic neighborhoods would probably last several years. And that way, maybe you're not spending so much money on something that might look better. That way, we can look at Two North and try and acquire right-of-way and relocate utilities as the future goes to, to widen out that road to 24 feet or even three lanes as we need to. So I'd present both options as probably equal recommendations. And the Road Committee voted unanimously to recommend the, the first one, and they just didn't have some of that information on the second one before that, so.
One question, so I understand. So we're not going to do anything from Pepper Tree to Bright Star?
Be a chip seal.
No, one, one option's to do an asphalt overlay. The second option would be to do a chip seal.
I see it, man. Thank you.
So.
I'm good with it.
So if you overlay from Pepper Tree to Bright Star, you're, you're not going to have enough money to do Highlands Ranch and Mesa View.
I understand.
That's kind of the choice.
Questions, comments?
But because this is more than the 1.4, you might want to explain.
Oh, the, the other million is HRF money, if it comes in.
Don't leave me saying.
Well, I, I, I looked at finance for that one, so I'm not finance.
My question now, that Frank has showed this to us, how do the people on the Roads and Streets Committee feel about the alteration compared to what you voted on in meeting?
I completely understand. I think it's fine with me.
Yeah.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And a lot of this is just preserving, we do realize that there's a lot of roads out there that probably need, you know, are in a lot worse shape. But the ones that are in worse shape are kind of already beyond.
Need to be redone.
So, and the, these are, these are a lot of showcase communities for Chino. And so in order to kind of keep our value, we, we figured it was, it's better to maintain so that we don't lose these subdivisions, or the roads in these subdivisions.
Completely. I think it's all fine, and I think Two North is going to have to be, like you were saying, we're going to have to get right-of-ways and ditches and utilities moved. It's going to be very, very expensive.
And long, take a lot of time.
Take a lot of time, yeah.
So this would be good. I think to get the best bang for a brunt spread out, this was the only way to go, with the suggestions we got put to us.
Okay, I guess we'll have to bring this back on the agenda for our approval. Thank you very.
Can we ask one question?
I mean.
You always ask. I have a question, yeah, because it's, we have a lot of other things on our table and what have you. How much sewer would 1.4 million build me?
All right, Frank, start behind you until you're good.
Frank?
How much what?
How much sewer do I get for 1.4 million dollars?
You mean line, ending around pipe, am I correct?
Yeah. I mean, I got all, all these little developers that want to build stuff. We, people doing lot splits. If I have sewer there, they got to hook up.
Could I make comment on that?
Yeah.
We are so far behind on our roads since '06, when the fall happened, that we got to get caught up with the roads, or where the whole town's going to be dirt again.
Okay, I mean.
And you, and you seen what happened with, what's the name, Unity Lane out there, you know, they took that back to dirt, and you seen the reckless they raised about that.
Oh, I know. I just, they didn't want to pay for it. That's what irritates me.
They don't want to pay for anything.
I know.
They still say the thing we hear most about is roads.
Well, that's what everybody uses. And if they have a septic tank, they don't care about the sewer. I care about our water, and the only way I can get water credits is just have sewer lines there to get money back.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's more priority, you know. You're going to build pipes for the future, or do you take care of the problem you have on hand? And I agree with you. I am a pro opponent of sewer in the ground. I want to see it happen. I want to see it happen, but I think it's a priority thing.
Just crude answer, depending on street repairs, to put the sewer in a mile and a half to two miles.
It's a lot.
So not enough? 1.4 doesn't buy you enough.
Doesn't buy me enough, okay. Okay, let's move on to item, the next item.
I think the town will be happy to see this, once it's, the roads being addressed. Say that again? I think the town will be happy to see that the roads are being addressed out of this. Yeah, this actually is a pretty big bang for our buck. Yeah. 2.4 million.
Absolutely.
Biggest I've ever seen since I've worked here in my career. So, you know, one good thing came out of COVID. Right, thanks, COVID.
Okay, let's move on to item three, P five, discussion regarding professional service agreement with Stro Architecture Incorporated for the police station, 30% schematic design service, and the amount of 148,457 dollars. Mr. Marbury again. And I see we have our architects here.
Yes, I think we have one slide on this. I brought the wrong glasses, so.
Chief, what were all the, the helos this morning that are all around, flying around?
I don't know if you have my permission. We, we didn't have anything.
It wasn't you, huh?
It wasn't me. I don't think it was the county either, on the radio.
There was a prescribed one. There's a prescribed one.
It may have been fire, you know.
Oh, is that what it was?
I don't know, just a thought.
Were they red?
Or bright yellow?
No, the black ones, you know, the ones that hurt.
Because the red are the fire ones, and there's a batch of them in town.
I don't, I don't know. Yeah, probably what it was, the fire. I didn't get to see them, I just heard them. Excuse me, Frank.
Oh, sorry. So the, the task at hand was to select a team of architects for, to do a, a 30% design of a future police station. And then, once you see that, see if you want to amend the contract to go further in the design. But for just the 30% design, the proposed cost is 148,057 dollars. And then, once that design is completed, if Council wants to move forward with the contract, once that design is completed, Council can review it, and at their discretion, decide to move forward with further design or not at that time. The cost to complete the entire design and an additional 300,000 is somewhere around 450. So when you think total design, 450,000. But the contract that was brought up in the proposal is just for, for a third of that at 148,057 dollars. So we do have the teams here. I wasn't on the selection committee, but Joe and Chief were, I think, and the, the architect team is here to answer any questions if we want to go over anything.
And just to quickly bring Council up to speed, we did have a selection committee, and we actually had six firms propose, submit their proposals to us. We scored each, each of the firms, and then we had oral interviews for the top three. And staff, you know, basically the committee's recommending Stro's architect to be the successful bidder based on their oral interviews and stuff. So if you'd like, we could have Mr. Stro and his folks come up and just give you maybe a little two-minute presentation, two or three, on what their concept is.
Tell them I'm timing them.
Okay, Jack's timing you. You have three minutes.
Please ignore Jack, and come up and please give us.
So I'll introduce Doug Stro, and Doug, I'll let you introduce your folks.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am Doug Stro. I own Stro Architecture that I started in Prescott about 29 years ago. This is one of my partners, Bill Otwell, another well-known architect in town, and Richard Aldridge. You probably see too much of him around here. But we two have done many, many projects over the years together. So it's a very cohesive team. We've done the new police station for Prescott Valley and the police station downtown Prescott years ago. And done quite a few projects out here, the, you know, the Aquatic Center for you, and the, I think, what is now the Boys and Girls Club, and a few other things. So we're happy to be back, and I think you've got a really good site, a lot of potential. And so we're, we're excited to get going.
Start this, please, question.
No.
Andy?
Chief? I'm, I'm deferring my questions to Chief. I was in here for your opinion.
Okay.
No, sir.
I'm good. How do you actually determine, or do we get to, what's our building going to look like? What kind of architectural, are you going to make it wagon wheels, or?
It'll be a big glass tower.
Contemporary glass tower.
No, that's totally up to you all. You know, the first meetings we'll have is programming, and those will be a lot of different questions, and the style is, is a particular question. And we have examples we can show the design committee. And, you know, I know that each building we've done, that's how we've done it. And when we did the Aquatic Center, as I recall, it was more of a territorial approach. I don't know what your philosophies are lately, but we're not going to just tell you what you're getting. We're going to read your minds and figure out what you're looking for. And that's where we're, we're going to be coming from.
I do have one question, I'm sorry. The estimated cost of the building will come in at the 30%. You'll have that?
The cost of the building will be determined during the 30%, yes.
Okay.
We have a, an estimating company out of Phoenix as part of our team, but that's all they do.
Okay.
And they're typically within 5% or so.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Well, I listen to agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What is that?
Don't beat our chief up on the way.
Is that part of?
Thank you.
This? Yeah. Can we see that?
Who is that?
That's part of this presentation.
Well, this, this is when they did their presentation, interviewed the three firms. They were the only ones that actually drew anything for us, which was one of the things I did like, and this is just totally conceptual, based on, you know, what we talked about with them during the bidding process.
Is the highway at the bottom, sir?
This will be the highway. This is the existing building where we are now. And one of the things that I stressed was the ability to expand this in the future. I don't want to strap another council or another chief 10 years down the road going, why'd you build something too small?
So, part of what they did was look at how they could grow in the future. So like right here in this area, it, you know, could potentially be a building like what Prescott Valley did. I, I didn't even think about this. I always thought, well, just stick another story on a building. But you can't build a second story on a building you're currently working in. And that's what Prescott Valley ran into, and that's why they built a separate building. But they have future expansion here, future expansion there. And this would put the building back in this backcourt of property. We've also talked about additional parking up here at the Town Hall Building for handicap, because, you know, while we're doing it, and we would share parking between us, current parking lot is.
And a separate entrance.
Separate, we'd have to do a separate entrance, entrance off 89 because of the night traffic.
So you have two egress entrances?
Yes, sir. The existing one, they've looked at putting another one here on the south side. So this is totally conceptual, just something we could kind of visualize what they were talking about. But like Mr. Stro talked about, they, we would establish a design committee and include members of the public, council, PD guys, and we just kind of brainstorm, and then they can come back to us with more concrete design. And then that will give them the ability to then bid the project and tell us what it would cost. So, and I'll leave this up here if anybody wants to look at it afterwards.
Thank you.
Raises a question to me, Frank. Where did Frank go?
He left.
Okay.
Joe probably knows the answer.
This is, as far as whether ADOT, a second entrance, are we going to have to do anything special?
Like a deceleration lane?
Yes.
Yes, we've been talking about that's likely that they'll need. ADOT will have to look at the project, but yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that will then be definitely figured into the total pricing?
Yes, yeah. And then one of the procurement things that they, that Stro recommends is that we do a design bid-build, where they design it, they bid it out, and that way, they remain on our side through the whole process and look out for our, our interest. And then they can help us, you know, find the contractor, so we don't get in a situation like we did with the bathrooms. So.
We can, we can also do C M R S.
We could, yeah, but, but.
Is there a question about a D cell?
Yeah, we said there's a potential, there's a high, almost a high likelihood, I said, but, but ADOT will determine that.
Yeah, and I think, if I could, some of the, some of the previous plans for this campus show the entrance moving to the south side of the property. And so more of the D cell lane would be along the front edge of the property to make it a little easier. When you look at the adjoining property, sometimes there might not be room. So for a right-hand turn lane, if the driveways move to the south end of the property, that might make it easier. And so when we routed the power and everything for the cell tower out here, all that was considered at that time to stay out of the way of that. So just in case that happens.
We're not limited to a right lane, or a right-turn-only exit, then?
No, it could still be a full movement, but just have a D cell lane for the right turn. But the, the ultimate permit comes from ADOT, so that'll be their decision in the end, based on the design that's provided and back and forth with the engineers. It's their road in the end.
Yes, sir. All right, for Lon and you, and I remember when we first looked at the property here, and they were building all kinds of buildings and what have you, wasn't there a road going out to Center Street off the back of the property?
Right, that's been closed off.
Okay, thank you. Someone else remembered what. Okay, let's go on to the next item. Consideration and discussion regarding proposed changes to the town's procurement code. Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I took this to the Finance Committee, I think, back in January, and they recommended approval to the Council. But I thought I just would run it by you guys in a study session to see if there's any questions. My, my intent was probably just to put it on the consent agenda item, but with COVID, I just sort of pushed it and didn't want to bring it to you at the time with all the meetings. So what really happened is we were trying to go out to bid for some of our smaller projects, and actually, the court extension off the back was the project that did it. And the first time we went out to bid, we went out to bid with this bid packet, which had about 69 pages to it. And we received no bids. So Cecilia and I called the attorney and said, man, we have to do something, because these smaller projects under 50,000 dollars, we're just not getting a response. No one's going to do, fill this out for a 30,000 dollar job. It's just not going to happen. So Andrew did put together a packet that I believe is about seven or eight pages, nice and simple. They go out, they, when they sign it, they say they've, they agreed to all of our terms and conditions, which is on our website. So that led into the discussion, should we look at our procurement limits? Andrew thought that doing these for projects up to 50,000 dollars was reasonable, and, and I concur with that. I thought that was a good number. And these are the re-roofings, the paintings, the buildings, putting the new floorings in, the things that we budget to do throughout the fiscal year, that we can just get a quick little quote, and it's actually just a request for quotation, it's not even a bid form. We can advertise it, get them in quick, award it, and get the job done. So on page 64, I believe, in your packet, there is a procurement policy summary and proposed changes. And I don't know if yours is in color or not.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's lighter, though.
It's a little bit lighter. So those are what our recommended changes are to the procurement code. And I took the opportunity to just tweak some of the procurement code language, which you'll see if I bring this back to Council, just to make it sort of up-to-date and more follow what we're actually doing in practice, you know, instead of, you know, it's just making it easier for the department heads to procure things quicker, but also just exactly what we're doing every day when we're reviewing POs and requisitions. The biggest change is raising the Mayor and Council approval from 25,000 to 50,000 for most items. If they're budgeted, it would be all budgeted items under 50,000. We could basically use this method to procure it, and then the town manager could approve it forward. If it's a non-budgeted item, the same thing, if it, if it can, if it falls within their budget, if they can say, well, let's do this project instead of this one, and it's under 50, the town manager can, can approve that. Anything, let's see, any contingency fund use, is anything over 25,000, we'll, we'll go to you guys. But allows the town manager approve contingency funds under 25,000. So if we have that little 5,000 dollar thing come up, it's like, oh, okay, let's just take it out of contingencies. Right now, we bring everything to Council that we use contingency funds for. The other is change order approval allows the town manager to go up to 50,000. And emergency purchases allows the town manager to go to 50,000, where prior to that, only the mayor could authorize those. And then they have, and then he has to report to you guys that the emergency purchase was made at the next council meeting. Gives the contracting authority to the town manager under 50 from 25,000, so it just doubles that. And then the oral bids are less than 2,500. Right now, they're 10,000. And oral bids is when you call three guys and ask them for a price. There's really no documentation. And I do not like that. I just, I have a hard time when they go, oh, one guy gave me 6,500, one guy said, well, give me something in writing, prove that to me. And so that's why I'm asking for informal written bids now, be, be between 2,500 and 10,000, which is, you call up, and informal written, the guy can just send you an email, quick, you know, something quick, that you have something in writing for them. And then anything from 10,000 to 50,000 is written bids, and that's when we pull this guy out and go ahead and do it, get, do the quotation on it. So, so that's it. I mean, in a nutshell, it, it's really whether you want to make that change. Now, I've, I've looked at all of the other cities and towns. Prescott is still under 25,000. Prescott Valley's under 30. Cottonwood's under 50. Sedona's under 50. Camp Verde's under 30. And Wickenberg's under 25. So, so they're all over the place there. It's just what you, as, as Mayor and Council feel comfortable with.
Joe, how long's it been, 25?
As far as I can remember, I can't tell you about when that was, but it's been a long time.
20 years at least.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the 50,000 sounds good. But now, let's go to the lower end, the 2,500 to 10,000. When you said, you know, they're just calling out, they're saying, hey, how much is this going to be? And you want to see some kind of a simple quote.
Right.
What are we also sending out to those people that are giving us that simple quote to give them some kind of specification? Instead of, hey, how much to fix this?
Right, right. Or, I need to buy this pump. What is that pump?
Just something to, to specify what the project is. It can be a simple five-winer.
Scope of work.
But you have to have something for the scope of work, otherwise, you have nothing to go back on a contractor for.
Yes, yeah, and I agree.
So that's the only thing I would add to that.
I agree. And throughout this year, you're going to see, I'm basically trying to centralize our purchasing department, so that everything will come through my desk for a while and get it set up, so we standardize the way we purchase everything. And I think you'll see those efficiencies and those, those changes, those little tweaks happen as, as we do stuff, so.
I've seen too many times when, I've seen too many times when people just verbally say something, and then it's, oh, well, I didn't know this, so we'll add this on, and we'll add this on, we'll add this on. And so that's the thing you got to watch.
That's why we need documentation.
Yeah.
You know, exactly what their quote is in most cases. So there's some repetitive purchasing things, like, for example, like the wastewater treatment plant, where we're buying the same chemicals from the same guy year after year. I'm looking at going through all our state procurement contracts and really itemizing what they have available, so that, yeah, we might be buying from ABC chemicals year after year, but the state contract might have something from XYZ chemicals that we haven't got a quote from for a few years. So I'm looking for those things, too, to try to save money, so.
This change order approval, up to 50,000? This, uh, change order approval, up to fifty thousand, that's more than some of the jobs on here.
Well, that would be for any contracts that Mayor and Council approve.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we let out a, you know, million-dollar contracts, you can approve up to fifty thousand.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
I'm kind of uncomfortable with it. At the dollar amount, um, only because there's so much changes in the works in the upcoming, in the near future. That just might be my, my distrust of people, but, um.
I, I can understand your part, but in order to do this, do it effectively, efficiently, you need to allow your, your key personnel to have some responsibilities, and if they're don't, not responsible, then they disappear.
Yeah. Due process.
Go due process. So it is very important, and we can slow this pro- process down or keep it going the way it is, but we can kind of make it a little more efficient. I think those things in there are still in there to say, town manager, you're liable for this, da-da-da-da-da-da, the whole people liable.
Yeah, and, and honestly, if there's projects that we think that are under fifty thousand dollars, that we're just not sure what we even wanna do, we're gonna bring them to council. I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna know everything we're doing, for sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see reports on that, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we're not gonna, this is, the, the major intent here is to try to streamline getting some of these routine budgeted things in and out the door. We're opening the paint bids for, uh, or the flooring bids for Development Services next Thursday, and we have six companies show up. They're gonna be around the twenty to thirty thousand dollar number. It'd be nice next Monday to award them the bid and get them going on it, so.
Cause there is a chance that any of, you know, like especially if you have a change order, it could take up to three weeks to get it to council, maybe four, by the time they get it agendaized and it hits the council, so, and it just puts a whoa to the project. So you gotta give them their head a little bit. And as long as we see the report, then we'll see where the money's going, and if it's a problem, then we can.
Make, make sure that person doesn't make the same, same mistake again.
Right.
It'd be kind of hard when they don't work here no more.
Anyways, okay.
So I, I just wanna bring it to you, make sure you guys are comfortable.
Anything else, Annie?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I put this on the agenda. Let's go on to item five. Preparation and discussion regarding the ground lease prepared by the town attorney between the town of Chino Valley and future tenant. Madam Titibet, I saw your daughter in the newspaper, huh?
Yeah, she was.
She wasn't too happy to get out of school, was she?
So rather than, um, try to go through the whole lease, like they just kind of whole thing about this, but, um, had a few points.
Whatever that is, probably whichever day when you go. Have another shot.
So we just talked about this in the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, which was good because it gave me a little bit more direction on where to, to talk about this at. Um, as it is, basically, contracts like these, commercial contracts are, they're, they're mainly boiler points, meaning it's a lot of legal, uh, mumbo jumbo that doesn't change in the contract, it's static. Um, the parts that do are like page five, for example, where council can decide the terms of it, number of years, lease, you know, the, the amount of lease they wanna charge, et cetera. Um, so in the subcommittee talks, we kind of just decided to leave it up to council to start talking about, how do we wanna, how do we wanna make those deal points? Do we wanna have it based on jobs, which was originally what it was supposed to be? Um, how many, uh, years free, or what do you want to charge, and what's that gonna be based on? So I thought I'd kind of, just kind of let you guys take it away, and, uh, we can start talking about it, cause it's really, it's kind of a broad topic right now. I don't know, Cory, since you were kind of helping lead that conversation, I don't know if you wanna kind of talk about what you were seeing?
Looking at what the, what the objective to even doing Old Home Manor is, and nationally economic development, and at what point, at what point do we even entertain a customer out there? Do we, do we wanna put in a, a minimum employee amount? Again, because I think that's really what we're looking at, is employing people. I would say if you're, if we're gonna put the employee number at ten, well, that, that's something they can get property, you know, multiple places, you know, so I think we're gonna be looking at kind of a, of a higher number employer, employee requirement before we really even wanna consider talking to them, and what we, we knew, we didn't talk at all about what that number is. That's what we're doing now. So, that's kind of the discussion at the moment. Our choices for parameters are employees, right? And.
Wages. I mean, this is kind of for you guys to define, but.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just trying to figure out what, what's our basis?
Wages, like you want, um, maybe minimum of forty thousand dollars, or a percentage above a certain amount. Full-time, maybe full benefits kind of thing. Um, people that would be able to then contribute back to the community.
So that's what we're looking for, is that some kind of business that's gonna pull in out there and employ X number of people at X, X wage.
That's what we're asking.
And that's the only thing we're gonna base this on? We'll start there, unless you, unless you have. What other parameters are there?
What, what did you say?
What other parameters do we have for, to say, this is why we want you, and instead of you? I mean, we got employees.
Square footage would be one maybe?
Okay, square footage.
Employees, a square footage, you know, if they're taking up a big footprint, but only have twenty employees, is that something that interests you or?
Good, is, is our point, I'm, I'm trying to get what our whole point of, of bringing out there. Are we looking for that first, first business to hit, no matter what it is?
Can I?
Just to get started? Well, I, I know from our previous meetings that we've had, we, we do have some parameters on, uh, like say the water usage, I know was a big one that, you know.
In types of businesses.
Yes, in types of businesses. Um, but basically, we're, we just, if we can stop the flow of people going south every morning, you know, that are maced, I would say basically more to
Go east.
A, a, a base level of employment.
Let me just step in real quick, not to interrupt, but, um, kind of what I was working on before I got this lease was more not years, but, um, one through twenty-five employees gets X amount of free rent upfront. Twenty-five through fifty, fifty through, so you could look at some sort of structure like that, cause that's all gonna give a bigger return to town. Um, that might be an easier way to define it than trying to combine two or three different elements, maybe just solely based on jobs for right now, so that we can define this a little bit better, so, um, that's kind of what I was, just so you guys know, working on before.
I'm sorry, I.
No, that's all.
I'm interrupting you, you had to interrupt me. Um, cause there's also that chance that it's an automated business, and it doesn't employ a lot of people, but their sell numbers are way higher than the people, the business that has twenty.
But what do we get out of it?
Yeah, why do we sell locally?
Uh, yeah, if it's sold locally, yeah, there's, and that's what I'm saying, what are.
What's the storefront?
The reason why I'm asking these questions is because I hear a lot from people, why are you guys wasting money on Old Home Manor? You guys just put signs out there, why did you do that? That thing is nothing but a money pit. I can't believe you're wasting money out there. You know, because, and, and nothing against you personally, you know, but as a town, we have put tons of money out there, and nothing's happened, really.
So we haven't put that much money out there yet.
Well.
Overall, the money.
I would say, what's tons of money?
I don't know. That's just what I hear from people, you know, we're spending money out there.
But we're also following council's direction, because council wanted to build a business park out there. And the goal at that time was jobs, and sometimes I'm hearing different things from council. Um, how much money are we gonna make off of that? That wasn't the initial push.
And that's what, that's where I'm at with my questions, you know what I mean? I, I'm willing to go however we're gonna go. I'm, I'm okay with, but I need to be able to answer people when they ask me, why are you spending money out there? We are, we're recognizing where our higher density housing is increasing here. I don't believe those people that are occupying these higher density homes, that they're having to drive into Prescott to work, and we know that they're leaving their money in Prescott while they're in there working. I agree. So therefore, if we then provide a base here that they can work a certain amount here, well, then they're more apt to spend their money here as well, and we're just trying to come up with a way to get that initial business started out there, or employers, you know, located out there. And that's where I'm going with that. So therefore, we're not, as a town, I don't see us, as being in the, in the landlord business, okay? I think we will make our money off of the sales tax that now they're gonna start spending here. And at that point, then you have, you know, your first tier, you know, uh, salespeople. What they build out there brings money into Chino Valley in the way of wages, not in the way of sales tax. Once they get their paychecks, now they're gonna spend their money local.
It turns around your community.
Yeah, so that's when the town gets a piece of it, so that we can then do their, the town, the town business. Our main priority then for out there is gonna be jobs.
Jobs.
Is gonna be jobs. Not just to get a business going.
That was our original thought.
Yeah, jobs.
Was jobs.
Yes.
And how do we go about doing that?
So I think what we're looking for is, is a discussion on what incentives we offer to what jobs, what opportunities they bring in. That's kind of, if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of where I think we're at in this discussion, is what are we going to, and we've kind of touched on it before, but we just stopped abruptly, so if we can do, Annie's hypothetical, if a company comes in with offering twenty jobs, what would we be okay with offering them to offset monthly rent or hookup fees or whatnot, versus fifty jobs, versus a hundred jobs, entry level to PhD? What are we looking for as far as our ideal, if we could have an ideal company move in, build, what can we offer them, and then kind of go back and forth on that as far, that's my idea, is if it's better than that, what can we offer? If it's less than that, what can we offer? Does that make sense? Kind of, Cory, you're looking, you're squinting at me.
I, I saw, I think what you mean is, so, look at this page right here, months, X through, you know, X through whatever, so if you do, um, one to twen-, so the way I had it written was different. I had one to twenty-five employees, and then you can decide how much free rent you get, twenty-five to fifty, and stagger it that way, and then provide me, you guys have the discussion, provide me with three different scenarios, you know, using Andrew, of course, that I have that toolkit in my belt, so when I'm having these discussions, I'm able to say, hey, based on what you're giving to the town, here's what I can give to you. So that way, I don't say, hey, well, maybe I can do this, or maybe I can do that. I have defined incentive programs, and then, that can always be negotiable. A lease is always negotiable, but there should be a boilerplate of what council wants in terms of number of employees. You should have some parameters.
Is, is square footage gonna enter into this too? No, because whoever the employer is, they will be building their own facility. Okay. Um, so. But we're gonna have to lease enough amount of ground and the parking for that. Yes. Where, say, a business comes in with thirty-five employees, they're gonna need a lot less property than one that comes in with three hundred. Yes. Now, what my thought on this is, is I'm looking for someone that would come in at a two hundred employee, you know, something more substantial, that it would then help kick off that, that entire area, and if it's, if it's the dollar a year kind of thing for that initial person, and Maggie can then advertise it, this is a one-time thing. We, we will allow you up to, you know, ever how many acres we'd, we decide. We have water here, we have sewer here, you know, your utilities are there. One, one-time deal, first come, gets the, you know, but you gotta come in, you're gonna hire the spent employees, and we'll give you a, you know, the land to use for a dollar a year for ever how long we decide, just to get that initial one in. Now, from then on, whoever then wants to start growing from there, going into a more, you know, broke-down, um, process, we could go there. That's a tough thing, number to come up with. That initial big. Yeah, I mean, like if you're gonna come in with two, your two hundred employees, just use that for, that's a nice number. Or say you're gonna get, okay, you can come in here and you're gonna get this land for a dollar a year for Hundred years. What, a hundred years, whatever. How, how do you come up with that? How, I mean, how do, how do I come up with, oh, that seems fair? Well, I would say that we need the bean counter here to figure out, okay, if the wages are gonna pay this much, you know, or, or Maggie, you know, probably even more Maggie in the economic development side of that. But there are formulas that say, you know, for every, every dollar that comes in, it's gonna turn over in your town, you know, four times and, you know.
That, that stuff's out there.
I know there's projections to do that.
How, how much is the property worth sitting empty?
Depends on who wants it.
So what, what are you willing to give to fill that property? I think that's what you're looking for.
And free rent might not be enough.
What is the cost to the town to do this?
That's right.
We have quite a large amount of property here. I think we need a whole lot more information to make this decision than what I have in front of me now.
That's what we are supposed to be discussing.
So you don't have to make a decision, but we need to start the discussion.
Oh, I agree with you, but I, I, but I think we need comparisons from, you know, other places about what they've done to get people in, and you know, what, what's fair, and how much the town's gonna realize from that, you know, because if we're just gonna bring in a business, to put something in Old Home Manor, and the town's not gonna get nothing out of it, it's other than maybe. What the, what the town gets is, you know, payroll taxes. Yeah, and then hopefully they go to Safeway and buy something. That's what we're hoping for. You know, if they're gonna live here.
And then that business perhaps brings another business in, and we can treat that business altogether differently.
I, I remember when Pitt, Pitt, uh, Prescott Valley was out in the middle of nowhere, I mean, that mesa, now you can't even see it. You know, and, and I understand that, but then again, I don't wanna, or maybe, I don't know, I don't know what I'm saying.
What are we willing to spend to get a business in there?
You know, I think, though, we should look, uh, two hundred is pretty aggressive. I think if you even looked at how many build, or how many companies in this whole community, not just Chino, have two hundred or more employees, it's kind of rare. So I think we need to have that analysis done to, like, with sizes of companies, so that we can have better knowledge of what we should expect for, cause we only have so much workforce in the whole area as well. And for a whole company to come here and say, I'm gonna hire two hundred people from here, that, that might be a little challenging, so I think we need to have that kind of information too, of, uh, what's the average size companies? How many fall in that group, and before you guys can say, two hundred's a good number, and.
And what's attractive too for a company besides free rent, you know, the utilities would be at the property, but.
I have a recommendation. So what we can do, and I talked to Mark Holmes a little bit about this, not in this particular scenario, but in others, is we can do like a mock, um, I don't wanna call it a mock trial, but like a mock, say, hey, Sprouts is coming. They have forty employees ranging from PhD all the way down to admin staff, um, and we can kind of have him help us formulate, and then you guys can say, if that was a scenario, here's what we can do. And that's a stepping stone into knowing kind of what your parameters are, and that's more of forty employees, which was more, a lot more realistic, kind of for a start out there. Um, in my opinion, so.
We need more than one, though, we need two.
Yeah, and I, that's what I think they're saying, is, is forty realistic, is twenty, is a hundred, um, but I don't think we know the answer to that. What is, what would be a typical company that might come to this whole region, and, uh, maybe NACOD could help with some of that? I don't know, Preitas might be able to help. Do like a mock, full mock setup, like he would come up here and say, I have a business coming, and I don't know if that would work in this scenario. Mark, yeah, I was saying that we might, it might help in trying to, maybe I'm off, but, something like that. Something like that where we can, if you're trying to get at certain parameters, what those numbers mean, or have a study done. So that you guys have more information. Yeah, Jim Rounds might be able to help you a little bit on some of that.
Questions? We've come around in circles. Hopefully we've, we have an idea where we're going now, which we may not have had before.
You know, cause I think sometimes too, though, when companies are opening, they'll tell you like, we'll hire fifty percent from your community, and we'll be bringing fifty percent from wherever. I mean, those are some of the things that maybe the council can decide on.
And I have no problem with a dollar a year for, for long being said. I understand that part.
And I think Maggie, if you go back to that Rounds report, maybe let the council know what a typical ground lease would give them, cause it's not a lot of money. The trade-off is the jobs, but that way you know kind of what you might be giving up if you do give free rent, and if it's only rent. Cause it's not a ton of money, or maybe additional things.
We really don't have a whole lot to offer, other than that.
Well, it could be stuff like waiving permit fees, or, you know, things like that, that are.
In the construction side of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hookup fees, stuff like that, that you could say, you can pretty much come in, you pay for all your building, but any, all the permitting and stuff will be done.
Okay. There's another idea?
I just don't, I don't think we'd put it all out there, though.
Right.
You know, we, we figure out, I like the mock deal, maybe do it three scenarios to take a look at that, to try to come up with this structure.
Yeah.
But then this structure is in our briefcase. We don't just hand that out to people.
Yeah.
You know, and, and say, hey, here's what we're willing to do for you, we're gonna wait and see what they ask for.
And I know that, that's been Maggie's approach more so than, than mine. Uh, what I look at is the amount of land that's available there in the whole airport area right now. There is a lot of competition for these, you know, types of businesses. Everybody, every city is the same, same deal. So again, just trying to throw that one freebie out there, just to, just to get it established.
That'll be a big part, I think, is getting that first decent business in there that.
But I think too, knowing if, like you said, knowing what the rent is, and knowing what we're gonna give up, it may not be a big deal. But I agree with what you're saying, you know, there is a lot of land out right now. And, and, you know, and a little better locations for possible employees, employees than, than there is out here, so.
And not that this is future, you're gonna have a longer runway down there, you're gonna have commercial aircraft coming into that airport.
It's gonna be crowded.
It's gonna expand. It's really gonna burst open in the next fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah, they got that.
Hopefully that will come our direction. And that's what we kind of need to plan. Where are we gonna draw that from? I think some of the high-tech stuff from the airport could come our direction.
I see fifty jobs as my target number. Like, that's my ideal. Like, if we can get one company with fifty jobs, I will.
So what if it's one company that says, we have a great business plan, we've got thirty jobs, but within five years, we're gonna be up to sixty? I mean, I think she has to have those types of things that she can bring back to council and say.
But I, I would like to see the, what the anticipated wages will be, and what that means.
You guys in a good company will have that. A good company will have that business plan, they'll have those projections.
Yep.
And they should know that we were gonna ask them that, if we're gonna be giving them stuff.
I think you're, I think fifty is probably a good point. Anything, anything more than that, it's stretching. Good. Yes, sir, you have a.
Can we afford to turn anybody down? You're trying to get things started out there, you're really gonna tell somebody, oh, you don't pay enough, so we don't want you? Tough decision.
It is.
That's what I was bringing up from the beginning.
Be a nice problem to have.
It would be a nice problem to have.
You know.
Yeah.
Like that fleeting place that's across the street that you said would might be interested?
Those are cannons.
No, that's a company that came to town, they bought a bar, and that's thermal backed, the U D contractor.
But what I hate is for Maggie to start, I hate to say pimping the property, and then she keeps going, hey, yeah, you can have free rent, and they're like, okay, that's four thousand a year, you know, it's not that big a deal. So I think we can, we need to make sure that she has a couple things there that she can offer, but we'll bring some parameters to you guys, and kind of let you know maybe what some other people are doing, and. Some parameters would be nice, you know, I've been out in, in front of developers, investors, whatever, and when they ask that question, I kind of go, well, they're available, but I, I need a little bit more than that. I can't pimp it out, with just that. I need to be able to at least provide, without giving them, you know, your association, whatever you're trying to do, but at the same time, to be able to have a couple.
Okay.
Maybe what I'll do is work with Rounds Consulting, so you guys have a little bit more detailed information to be able to study it more and make some decisions.
Comfortable.
Bring this back at a future study session.
Now, yes, the whole thing, is this a direction we want to go? I know we've already gone this far with Old Home Manor.
I think we need to go on. Unfortunately, I think we need to go on.
Well, I kind of feel like we're like six months pregnant, you might as well give birth.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will say, we've had, there's, I toured that property several times, I've had pretty big guys looking at it, and they still are. Um, there's one that's interested. So it's getting traction without even, that's just with networking aside, that's not even with the marketing package put together yet, or anything. So it, you might be surprised. We don't know.
Well, and I wouldn't be too worried about, you know, I know there's been some talk about wages, well, how much are they gonna pay, what are the wages gonna be? We've got a huge amount of people in Chino and north that can't afford to drive to Prescott or Prescott Valley to work for twelve to fifteen dollars an hour.
True.
But if there were twelve to fifteen dollar an hour jobs here, they could, they, they would work.
And they'd prefer to, yeah.
So.
Work in their own community.
Maggie, what are you looking for us for tonight? Are we reviewing this whole lease?
I, I just a little bit of direction, I think that I got it. I think what, um, we can update the Jim Rounds study, um, and then bring it back to session, you guys can think about some incentives, you can roll them up me, and I can roll them up Andrew. Just to have a few that I can actually talk about. I think that's kind of where we're at. Again, it's just difficult, we don't, we've only been really seriously approached by Sprouts, which might not be a bad scenario.
All about Sprouts.
And they're still not off the table, everyone's holding right now, cause of COVID. But yeah, no, I think I have, I know what you guys, the direction like me going, so thank you.
Do we have a, the demographics of this town, probably just from our last census, though, would be?
I use Esri data, which is real-time data, it's the best, it's current, and I have Will put that together for me. It's more accurate.
Which would actually give us some of the numbers that Lon is talking about?
Yes, and I have that. I actually wrote a grant for, to help pay for the Rodeo Road project. I haven't heard back on it, I don't know, but there's a lot of really great information in there. If you guys want a copy of it, please let me know. I'm happy to provide it. It's got a lot of the numbers for employees, and what that gives to the town, and how many square feet those employees would use, so.
Cause I wonder, like you're saying, just how many of those, just because that's where the jobs are, that that income level is having to travel that way now?
They're, they're not.
That we, we may actually have enough employees right here, ready to service a customer, you know, an employer currently.
I, I've got young people that work for me. They tell me about their friends, you know, they're, it's working in Prescott Valley, but it, it just didn't work. By the time he, by the time he buys tires to put on his truck, and he drives back and forth, and pays for his gas every day, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, my son moved into Prescott for that, where he raised up his.
I think that's pretty common, unfortunately. How many people can get out of here, and how hard it is.
Which is a great selling.
Can't pretty even. Absolutely, yeah, for that level, yeah, I agree.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Maggie, you have your, your task. Bring it back to us, and we'll discuss it again.
So the next item's not really, it's not a study session, I just wanted to keep you all on the loop. This is already being done. So, I guess I'll just pass this around. Had Tom's print shop design the real estate sign throughout Old Home Manor. And then Frank, Frank wants those are done, and hopefully they can kind of do like a dirt pad next to the real estate sign. Necessary to start marketing it, otherwise it just looks like there's two signs out there, and nothing's going on, so I'll pass that around to you. So it's just an informational? Yeah, it's just an informational.
Okay.
And here's a bigger version of it.
Any other discussion tonight?
Oh, you got one?
That's all that's on the agenda.
Yep.
I got the previous.
Dang.
Oh, all right. He's already got one, he said. He's better than you are.
Lon, it's your turn.
I turn what?
It's your turn.
Oh.
Since you missed last week.
We missed you.
Wait a minute, I gotta, I gotta finish reading, I'm not done with the meeting.
I feel like we have nothing accomplished.
All right. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, the rose is extremely, like, that is, that needs to be put out somewhere, that's, that's a big win for us.
Which one?
Yeah, but that's not, but that's not an.
We have, we have. We have a meeting, we have a meeting next Tuesday evening, we will have.